I'd like to call the, call to order the Plan and Zone Commission meeting of today, Tuesday, May 31st. I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Bob Ingram, I will chair tonight's meeting. If you would like to speak, please step up to the podium, introduce yourself and your address. Try to keep your remarks to maybe five minutes or so, and if you have any questions, address them to myself. We'll take it from there. We'll start off with, we have no public hearing tonight, so we'll go right into our regular meeting. Commissioner Tomlin, roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Present.
Eichelberry?
Present.
Johnson? Tomlin here. Ingram?
Present.
Happeners, excuse. Bransgaard?
Here.
Reinards?
I'm here.
Manus?
Here.
Garrington?
Here.
Stoke? And Johnson's here. We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of city council activity. Laura?
The only update I have is that the rezoning for Menards was tabled at city council, they'll be considering the, do the first consideration this next cycle. The petitioner was not able to attend the meetings.
Thank you, Laura. Secretary's report.
Move to approve.
Secretary's report has been moved and seconded for approval. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, it will stay as issued. Move into Comprehensive Plan Committee. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one case this evening, and it's case CP 22-01, request of the city of Davenport to amend the Davenport Plus 2035 Comprehensive Plan by assigning future land use map classifications to the approximately 200 acres of land bounded by I-80 Forest Grove Drive, Utica Ridge Road, and the city limit to the east. Staff recommends case CP 22-01 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and I would so move.
Case number CP 22-01 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Laura, or is that Matt?
Yep, I'll take it. So this is for the roughly 200 acres of land, shown in yellow on the map before you, so it's located south of Interstate 80. The west boundary would be Utica Ridge Road, south is Forest Grove Drive, including that small portion of land just south of Forest Grove Drive, and then the city limits to the east. City staff have been receiving increasing development interest on this piece of ground, given the construction of Forest Grove Crossing, which is a subdivision in Bettendorf just to the east. So they're looking to expand that development westward into the city. So as part of that process, city staff is looking ahead to the future land use map to ensure orderly development of the substantial growth area. So it's currently zoned agricultural, as well as most of the land north of Forest Grove Drive, and then you have some limited residential to the south, and then Crowe Valley Golf Course, which is open space just south of there, and then surrounded by the city of Bettendorf to the east and south. So the Davenport Plus 2035 Future Land Use Map is put together to ensure orderly development of the city. There's multiple different land use classifications ranging from different scales of commercial development. Residential General consists of all housing types, from single-family through to our highest-density multifamily. There's civic and institutional, industrial, parks and rec, as well as agricultural zoning So currently, the site is under an urban fringe land use classification. So that category is meant to address areas that are currently outside of the urban service boundary, but may be considered for inclusion later within the planning timeframe, and then appropriate land use categories should be determined at that time. So the city has determined that now is an appropriate time, given the amount of development occurring in that part of the city, to assign land use classifications. So it's currently urban fringe, the entire 200 acres, just, sorry, give it back. So just north of the interstate is agricultural reserve. To the west in Davenport, we have residential general. Shown in green is Crow Creek. It's standard city practice for a future land use map to put creeks within an open space and public land use classification. And then you could see Crow Valley Golf Course is under a Parks and Recreation Open Space So this map shows the city of Davenport Future Land Use Map adjacent to the city of Bettendorf Future Land Use Map, so immediately adjacent to the subject property. Bettendorf has an urban low intensity, and then a moderate urban intensity land use classification, so that's probably most compatible with our residential general for the city of Davenport. So city staff have reached out to various different departments, as well as outside agencies for feedback on how to best develop this portion of the city. So one of that was reaching out to the city of Bettendorf, as well as traffic engineers to determine the best manner to develop this site and how to access it. City engineers would like to see access points along Forest Grove Drive aligned with the three roads directly south in the city of Bettendorf. So that's Somerset Road, Golf Course Road, and then Eagle Ridge Road to the south. Forest Grove Crossing in Bettendorf, which is the neighborhood to the east, currently has one road stubbed into Davenport, so they would like to see that connection made as an east-west route connecting the two municipalities. And then there likely would be one access point along Utica Ridge Road. The state DOT restricts access points with how close they can be to interstates and overpasses, I believe that number's about 1,000 feet, so they would get a, probably one connection point out to Utica Ridge Road there. There currently is sanitary sewer that flows through that eastern portion of the site outlined in green, so that goes along Forest Grove Drive, and then that was, we believe, put in to service the rest stop that's just to the north. So we've also have reached out to Iowa American Water. They've stated that, like any other development within the city, that their services can be extended to the subject area. Extension of their utilities would just be at the expense of development. Staff have also reached out to the Parks and Recreation Department. They have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Within their plan, they have level of service maps, so this portion of the city, which is shown on the red star on each map, is deficient in parkland. So they identified a need for potentially a neighborhood park, as well as a community park, potentially one or the other. Neighborhood parks are typically five to 10 acres in size, community parks, I believe, are 10 to 20 acres. So city staff, we met with the ownership group for this area, it's owned under the same family, so we met with them on April 28th, as well as with an interested buyer that would be looking to continue that residential subdivision into Davenport. So we spoke about first what's needed is the amendment to the future land use map, and then following that process would be the rezoning process, subdivision process, and then development. So staff have published a hearing notice in the Quad City Times, and no written comments have been received from the public. So this map represents staff's recommendation for the subject area. So currently, the urban service boundary does not include this portion of the city, so staff would have the urban service boundary extended south along the interstate, and then along the city limit to encompass the entirety of the development. Urban service boundary was originally intended to help focus development within the city of Davenport, where existing infrastructure currently exists or can be easily extended, as well as where services such as police and fire can reasonably service and maintain. So after our outreach with different departments and agencies, we feel that this developable area is within a serviceable portion, so that's why we're extending our boundaries. Police and fire are currently already servicing that portion of Forest Grove Drive and the neighborhoods in the surrounding area. In terms of land use classifications, staff are assigning residential general to the entirety of the 200 acres, so residential general allows for all different types of housing in different densities. It also does allow for parkland, as well as limited commercial development that's compatible with the neighborhood character. Utica Creek flows through the site, it connects with Crow Creek to the south, just off of this map. So staff would be putting that into an open space and public land classification to be consistent with our other creek systems. So we took 100 feet from the center line of the creek, east and west, to make that boundary. There is currently a commercial node shown on the corner, I'm sorry, the intersection of Utica Ridge Road, and then Forest Grove and Vets, so that would be retained there. So residential general does allow for that limited commercial development to take place, that likely would be focused around that intersection. So staff is recommending that the case be forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the map on the previous screen. So the findings are that the proposed future land use amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as the adopted land use policies. The proposed amendment promotes the orderly development that protects the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. And then finally, the amendment identifies land for current and future development through the extension of the urban service boundary.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, can you go back to the street connections? Exhibit, please. A quick question on the developing residential to the east, which I believe is in Bettendorf. The, it looks to me like that northern, most northern street there does stub into this development. Is that correct? And if it is, is there a reason that it was not identified as continuing into the, this parcel as another way to access?
Sure, that might have just been oversight on my part. If it does stub in, it would be continued west into Davenport as well.
I couldn't tell, my eyes aren't what they used to be, but thank you.
Yeah, I may have overlooked that northern connection.
Good sight there, Commissioner Tomlin, I appreciate it. Commissioner Bransgaard?
Matt, you mentioned that in residential general, you could have some limited commercial activity. What kinds of commercial activity? Just so everybody has a sense of what could be allowed.
Sure, so limited commercial could be restaurants, or smaller types of businesses that would allow, for instance, someone in the neighborhood to walk to that service. It could include daycare, probably anything that's allowed in maybe like a commercial neighborhood zoning district, or commercial transitional zoning district. So probably a little less auto-oriented type businesses, and more neighborhood, walkable establishments.
Thank you, Commissioner Bransgaard. Commissioner Schneider?
I mentioned this last time, and I, if so, I apologize. Utica Creek, is there any flooding potential there?
So it's currently not mapped as a special flood hazard area. There always is a risk to flooding. Development would have to accommodate detention as part of their development, as well as accept water from north, from under the interstate. So we don't have any documentation of any flooding. As flood managers like to say, there is no such thing as a place that won't flood, it's just a matter of time. But there isn't as heightened or known risk associated with this property at this time.
Okay, and one other, back to her question, when, commercial node, would that, could that potentially include a gas station?
At the intersection, we may entertain up to a C2, it depends.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Eichelberry?
Yeah, so a question, you were mentioning that this part of the city has kind of a limited green space and park use. Are there any constraints about this current parcel that would need to be considered if park space, whether it be a neighborhood or community-sized park was designated?
So at the comprehensive plan amendment level, we wouldn't get down to the actual location of any of those parks. That would be something we'd take a look at through a rezoning process when we're assigning out the zoning categories, and/or through the subdivision process, when they could subdivide an area for the use of parks. I would anticipate in this development, as well as most new developments that are required to do detention, that there would be something focused around the detention area, whether that be a trail system, or a small pocket park associated with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Eichelberry. Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. You mentioned that there's already a sewer line in place. Was that sized to accommodate future development of this, this area, or is that something that will have to be upgraded?
It is a 12-inch sewer main, so it is sized appropriately. We do have, because the sewer line falls into the city of Bettendorf, we do have an agreement with them that they will accept the sewer system into their system, and at this time, it would be limited to that 12-inch, which for residential should be plenty for that, that branch. There is an additional sanitary, oops, yes, sanitary sewer line along Utica, south of Forest Grove Drive, that is, it's an eight-inch, and it could be extended north to service further west.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Anybody else, before I open it up to the audience? Commissioner Reinards?
One question. Are there going to be any plans for storm sewer systems to dump into Utica Creek in those developments as they occur?
So, most storm systems do discharge into the natural creek system at a controlled rate. That is one area that could. They, they also have a couple of culverts to the south on Forest Grove Drive that could also accept some of that water.
I guess my only concern is with all the green space and the development replacing the green space, the runoff that's going to be generated because our property's there now. Is there a potential, I guess, the question, as it relates to Utica Creek being able to handle the flow? Or is that something we have to consider down the road?
So that's something that's reviewed, so we would look at stormwater calculations as part of the development process. We do have more restrictive than the general state rules related to stormwater management. Currently, any new development has to take it back to a prairie-like state in terms of what the control of water running off of a property would be, and then it needs to release at a two-year rate. So it, it is, as opposed to, I think it's a five-year rate at the state level. So it is a controlled rate, they do have to detain. So in theory, it should not significantly change patterns, but drainage, changes in drainage do happen with any development in terms of when you're, this is farmland, so there's drainage tiles there, there's things that will change over time as this development occurs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinards. Anybody else? Commissioner Reinards? Would anybody in the audience like to step forward and comment either in favor of or in opposition to this? Final call? Seeing none, final call for questions from commission. Also seeing none, roll call please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Schneider?
Yes.
Eichelberry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Bransgaard?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We do not have any zoning activity, either on old or new business, subdivision activity. We do have two new business items. Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first case is F-22-06, request of Patrick Finley for a final plat of Finley South Utah Edition, located south of Telegraph Road and west of South Utah Avenue.
East.
East. What did I say? Yes, east, south, south. Okay, there's way too many directions on this one. And east of South Utah Avenue. Staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F-22-06 to the city council with recommendation for approval, subject to the listed four conditions, and I would so move.
Second.
Case F-22-06 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Thank you. This subject site should look familiar, as the property was recently rezoned. So the applicant owns roughly 59 acres of land along South Utah Avenue. The portion of land to be subdivided is along that eastern side of this, the property. So the applicant would be creating two lots. Currently, there's owned R1, which was recently approved by city council, the remainder has remained agricultural. So one lot would be five acres, one would be just over four acres of land. City council did pass the condition that was recommended by the Plan and Zone Commission to only create two residential parcels on that 9.15 acres, so the subdivision plat is in compliance with the rezoning. It's currently shown as agricultural reserve on our future land use map, which does allow for limited residential. So on the screen before you is the proposed final plat, with the two residential parcels, and then the remainder of the property not being subdivided. So city staff is recommending approval of the final plat, with the findings that the plat conforms to the comprehensive plan. The plat prepares the area for future development, and the plat with conditions would meet consistency with subdivision requirements. So there's just four conditions that are relatively standard conditions for final plats.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Seeing none, would anybody in the audience, would the petitioner like to step forward for any reason? It appears as though there's no questions. That being said, final call for questions? Seeing none, roll call please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Eichelberry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Bransgaard?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman. And the last case is F-22-07, request of Civil Engineering Consultants, Inc., on behalf of Mid-American Energy Company, for a final plat of subdivision 78 located at 6702 and 6652 North Division Street. Staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F-22-07 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed six conditions, and I would so move.
Second.
Case F-22-07 is moved, is seconded for discussion. Matt?
So this is a two-lot subdivision. The purpose is to facilitate sale of the western portion of the property. So Mid-American Energy currently has an electric substation on the east side of the property, and then the sale would be for that western portion, so they would split it out. So the land is currently, for this plat, is zoned R4, which is consistent with the neighborhoods directly to the north and south. Those neighborhoods each have a row of housing, single-family homes with backyards that abut this property. And then there is an R1 zone piece of land owned by Mid-American Energy along that eastern This does not require rezoning, though, they can maintain those zoning districts as is. And then future land use, predominantly residential general, and then there is commercial node on that western portion along Northwest Boulevard. So on the screen before you is the final plat, so Mid-American Energy intends to put the entirety of the substation onto one parcel, and then would further subdivide a second lot to the west. There are a variety of utility easements that span across this parcel, there's overhead power lines, and sewer easements that flow through this site. So Mid-American Energy has already planted their easement needs on that lot, too. So city staff is recommending approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So the findings is that the final plat conforms with the comprehensive plan, and the plat with recommendations meets subdivision requirements. So there's six conditions. One's just to highlight would be number four, to provide a minimum 15-foot-wide utility easements along all street right-of-way. There are currently two roads that stub along the north portion of the property. Five, to provide a minimum 10-foot-wide utility easement along all adjacent properties. And then six, to add a note that stormwater detention and water quality treatment will be required with the subdivision, and shall be owned and maintained by the property owner. It should be noted that that second lot, it's very unlikely to develop, just given the amount of utility easements and infrastructure that pass through that property.
I guess that was my question, Matt. I know back in the day, my dad designed that substation there, and he never really understood what anybody could do with that other property, other than expanding the substation, so what, what could fit in there? I mean, what, what type of development would be allowed in that area?
Well, we would, we would have to look at anything that would be allowed in the district. It's unlikely, so it's, what happened is, there was some nuisance activity that was occurring on the property, and in order to help resolve the issue, it was going to be entirely fenced in by Mid-American. And we have, one of the property owners has stepped up, and instead of losing that space, which a lot of people use as part of their backyards, an open space, and almost like a park kind of way, has stepped up and is willing to accept the responsibility to maintaining that space for the residents. So in theory, it kind of functions like a park, that's just not part of the city.
So in a sense, it really wouldn't be developed, it would just be acquired and then used as what it's being used now. I know when I was out there looking at it, you could definitely see where people have adopted that as their own personal property, even though it's not.
Right.
So, I understand, okay. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I guess I have one on that note, is just that if it is, is the responsibility of the homeowners, and is it still, I guess, in regards to maintenance is more my concern, is, you know, is it going to turn into a jungle, you know, with, you know, overgrown grasses and things that, you know, I can't, I mean, how is it maintained now? how is it maintained now?
So it's currently, Mid-American had a mowing contract and some of the residence mode places, and as if it was their backyard. So it would be the responsibility of the new owner who is aware of that responsibility and is willing to take on that responsibility. So I don't anticipate an issue at this time related to that.
So is there a chance that the neighbor would purchase this and have like an HOA agreement to maintain it amongst themselves, or?
So we've had that conversations with the buyer. Legal department says if, one of the thoughts was to subdivide and give the backyards to everybody. That would have to be an all-or-nothing situation. So that's something that can be worked on. It may happen at some point. And then at that point, it would be the individual property owners responsible for maintaining their own piece of the property. In the meantime, however, the property owner wishes to handle it is up to him, whether that is, you know, people sign an agreement and use the space that's technically private as part of their yard, and then in exchange, he helps maintain it. That's a private matter between the current, the potential buyer and the property owners.
Thank you, Laura. I didn't mean to step on you there, Commissioner Johnson.
No.
No worries, thank you. I guess I just, and then a follow-up question then to that is, I guess, has the property been offered to all of the neighboring owners? You know, has that piece of land been offered? If there's people that are kind of assuming some of this is their yard, and now it is going to be, you know, and I would, you know, like to assume in good faith that he has, you know, all good intention to keep it as it is. But when it becomes one owner's property versus others, and then they decide they don't like ex-neighbor, you know? And I guess, so I'm curious, what has been done to make sure that all of the property owners that abut this know that it is available for sale?
So the buyer's here, and he can help explain this. But as he explained it to me, is he has been in contact with all of the neighbors. So they are aware that he owns it. He lives in that neighborhood, and that's part of the reason why he's doing it. But I know that there has been a level of communication with all of the adjacent property owners. And beforehand, Mid-American did, as part of their process, for some level of, we're going to be fencing this land, and this is your opportunity, if you have something in there to remove it.
So they notified all the?
They notified as part of that process, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. That being said, would the potential buyer like to step forward and explain what his thoughts are, or their thoughts are?
1835 West 68th Street. Well, there's nothing set in stone in this. This was, when we bought this property, it was like a little hidden perk that everyone kind of knew about in that area, that, oh, you know, this land has kind of been used for years by everyone, whether it's been gardens, kids playing. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with like the movie The Sandlot. Almost every day, I can go out in that field, and about five, six houses down on the other side of it, there's kids that use one of the power lines as home plate. And there's about eight to 10 of them that are, you know, hitting, and they've got their own little base set up, and it's constant. We've already started, no offense to our, you know, good friends at Mid-American, we've probably already started maintaining it a little better as far as the grass and stuff is than it has been in the past. That was one of the complaints, if you'd speak with our aldermen, that, you know, grass is getting tall. Not necessarily tall as far as that field's standards would go, I'd say. But, you know, if it's right next to your yard, and people are worried about rodents and stuff coming in. So we've actually invested in a 72-inch commercial mower, and we've been mowing about thirds of it each week, and it's been kept down. Aside from, yeah, neighbors just, they go out there and they mow it. And I've been in contact with them, and some of them are like, hey, you know, can I still keep my garden out here? Hey, can these kids still, you know, play their stuff? Yes, you know, what we're trying to abolish is the nuisance stuff. The people that are just back there driving around and going and scrapping scrap metal, which we've almost all abolished. People that were illegally driving four-wheelers and cutting through the grocery store and stuff. So we're working just to make it better and keep this. If we fence that off, there'd be next-to-no backyards for almost any of those neighbors, at least on the 68th Street side. And kind of limits the child's play area and just families.
I personally commend you for your attempt to make this a neighborhood, community park, so to speak.
Appreciate it.
Very appreciated. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, I appreciate you stepping forward. Final call for questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Johnson.
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Brandsguard?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Schneider? And Eichelberry?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Any future business, Laura, Matt?
So we do have another right-of-way vacation coming. It's just a year of right-of-way vacation. We do have a couple that are pending. We haven't actually received full submittals for any of them, but we will keep you apprised.
Thank you. Communications? Anybody? Commissioner Tomlin? Not yet. Hold on. Laura?
Are we doing the bylaws?
Commissioner Tomlin, well.
Okay. I don't have any other level of communication at this time.
Okay. Under other business, we have the review of the plan and zone commission bylaws. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the staff recommendation for that is to accept the bylaws as presented, and I would so move.
The plan and zone commission bylaws has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt? Laura?
That one's me.
Of course it was.
So I have spoke with the executive committee about updating these bylaws. The last time they were updated was in 2016. So it was just time to do a cleanup, and we sat down and we went through it. Some of the changes are related to code sections that never transferred over from the code when it was updated. There, it's kind of clean up the language, make it a little clearer, drop some things out that aren't necessary. The largest, I think, in here is changing the annual meeting date from, the first one in April to the first one in July. We kind of talked about that at a previous meeting. Purpose of that is commissioner, terms expire at the end of March. So you would be asking potentially new commissioners to vote to have your officers in place where they, really, it's their first meeting. And so this will give new commissioners an opportunity to work with the full commission for several meetings before they make a decision on the officers they would be voting into positions.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions, comments, thoughts? Hopefully, you've all read the new bylaws. I would like to thank Commissioner Tomlin and Commissioner Manus and Laura for helping us, guiding us through the process, including comments from legal staff to make sure that everything's in order correctly. And a lot of hours were spent, and I really appreciate their guidance and help. And seeing no questions, could we have a roll call, please?
Brandsguard?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Schneider? Eichelberry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Appears as though that's the end of our printed business. Any additional comments from anybody? Seeing none? All in favor of adjournment signify by aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we are officially adjourned, and thank you for your attendance.